I would like to call this village board meeting of Thursday, January 5, 2023, to order. Please, will the clerk please take the role?
Mayor Koker?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Here.
Trustee Light? Trustee Maritato?
Here.
Trustee Pojek?
Here.
Trustee Schroeder?
Here.
Please stand up and join me in saying plejapha liis.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now move to community announcement. Trustee Schmidt, please.
The next coffee and chat with the village president and board will be this Saturday, January 7th, at the Center for Senior Citizens, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the village president or village board, please call the village president's office anytime at 630-909-5302. The village of Glendale Heights would like to remind residents to only park on paved surfaces on and around your property. Per village code, please do not park on your lawn and grass areas. Parking long term on your lawn can damage your vehicle and your property. If you observe someone parking on an unpaved surface such as their lawn, please contact the Community Development Department at 630-260-6030. Thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee Siddiqui?
The village of Glendale Heights has broken or unused holiday lights. Lights can be dropped off the Public Works. The village of Glendale Heights is collecting broken or unused holiday lights. Lights can be dropped off at the Public Works Garage located at 1635 Glen Allen Road on weekdays from 7:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Lights accepted for recycling include all colors and lengths of mini lights, C7 lights, C9 lights, rope lights, and LED lights. For more information on holiday lights recycling, please call 630-260-6000. Republic Services will pick up Christmas trees from the curbside during regular waste and recycling pickup Wednesday, January 11th through Friday, January 13th. Please make sure trees are not in the roadways where they may obstruct traffic. All trees must be free of tinsel, lights, and ornaments, and no longer than five feet. For more information, please contact Republic Services at 847-981-0091.
Clerk Schmidt, please.
Join the village of Glendale Heights in celebrating National Salute to Hospitalized Veterans Month by participating in the Valentine's for Veterans collection efforts. Annually, the village delivers beautifully written and decorated Valentine cards collected from the community to Illinois veteran homes and veteran hospitals. Drop off your Valentines at Village Hall by Wednesday, February 1st to ensure a timely delivery for Valentine's Day. Please do not decorate your cards with glitter, include social media contact information, or include envelopes with the cards. If you have any questions, please contact the Sports Hub at 630-260-6060. The Glendale Heights Police Department is now hiring new police officers. Applications are due by Friday, February 20th at 9:00 p.m. Join a team of hardworking individuals who have dedicated their careers to protecting and serving the residents of Glendale Heights while staying true to community-oriented policing. Applications are available at Village Hall or can be downloaded from the village website at www.glandalehighs.org/hr. There is a mandatory orientation and written exam on Saturday, January 28th, at Markort Middle School. For more information, please visit www.glandalehighs.org or contact the Glendale Heights Police Commission at 630-909-5398.
Trustee Maritato, please.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Registered today for the mother-son dance. Moms, put on your dancing shoes, and boys, come show off your best dance moves at our Candyland themed dance. Enjoy an activity-filled evening complete with dinner and dessert. The mother-son dance will be Friday, February 24th, from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at Glendale Lakes Golf Club. Please register by February 19th. The registration fee is $65 for residents, $75 for non-residents, and $30 for each additional child. For more information, please contact the Sports Hub at 630-260-6060. Dance the night away at our annual daddy-daughter dance on Saturday, February 25th, from 6:30 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at Glendale Lakes Golf Club. We will journey to Candyland for this year's theme. The evening will include dancing, dinner, and every participant will receive a souvenir to remember the night. Register by February 19th. The registration fee is $65 for residents, $75 for non-residents, and $30 for each additional child. For more information, call the Sports Hub at 630-260-60.
Thank you.
Welcome. Trustee Pojek, please.
The police department would like to remind residents on the parking regulations within the village during snowfall. There is no parking allowed on village streets designated as a snow route for 24 hours after a snowfall of one inch or more. There is no parking allowed on any village street for 24 hours after a snowfall of two inches or more. And there is no parking allowed on any village street for 72 hours after a snowfall of five inches or more. If you have any questions regarding winter parking restrictions, please contact the Glendale Heights Police Department, non-emergency number 630-260-6070. Thank you.
Welcome, sir. Trustee Mary Schroeder?
Thank you, Mayor. The Glendale Heights Police Department is asking residents to check on their relatives and friends to assure that they are not in need of assistance in extreme cold conditions. Glendale Heights has a warming shelter in place and is ready to assist the needs of our residents. For more information, call the police department's non-emergency number at 630-260-6070. And as a reminder, if any emergency, you should call 911 for immediate assistance. Also, during periods of extreme weather, the police department will activate the senior call list to check on senior citizens. Seniors or their family members may ask to be placed on this list by picking up a form at the Glendale Heights Center for Senior Citizens, or by calling the police department's non-emergency number at 630-260-6070, or at the Center for Senior Citizens at 630-260-6050. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Mayor?
Yes.
Keith, do we have the right times on that dance? Because one is at 7:00, one is at 6:30.
Yeah, so we generally use the daddy-daughter dances a little longer because we have more people and it takes us longer to get through the lines for registration and for the food.
Okay, thank you.
So what's his time?
For the mother-son, it's 7 to 9, and for the daddy-daughter, it's 6:30.
6:30. Mr. Keith? Number three, oh, not number three, two, number two. Tonight, we recognize Mr. Joseph Visconti of Westlake Hairstyling for 47 years of services in Glendale Heights. Mr. Joseph Visconti and family, can you please come up?
Come on the podium, sir. Right over there, sir.
Here, I want to add one more thing. I have one of my friend who is returning, and his name is Sam Joseph Visconti. Hello, Mr. Visconti. Where is that page? Oh, okay. We have this second page, you know. I will have some appreciation wording for you. And also, you are leaving, retiring, so please give me finer haircut, you know, to mayor of Glendale Heights. And I will pay you, you know. On January 1st, 2023, Joseph Visconti, I will add, you know, Mr. Joseph Visconti and Westlake Herring Style officially retired after 47 years in the Glendale Heights community. Joseph was, Mr. Joseph was born in Trabia, Sicily, Italy. He migrated to the United States at the age of 11. And by the time he was 14 years old, he began working at his very first barber shop. He served, he saved enough money to open his own barber shop at the age of 18 in Chicago, where he operated this establishment for 11 years. It was then that his Glendale Heights legacy began. He moved to Glendale Heights on Bloomingdale Road, where he opened Westlake Hairstyling for four years. A brand-new shopping center was developed, known as Westlake Plaza, at the corner of Bloomingdale Road and Armidale Road. He moved into this new location where he was, he has spent the last 47 years, for a total of 47 years, in Glendale Heights. Mr. Joe has been known to be a barber for generations of families. He remembers cutting children's hair, and then their children's hair, and so on. Then finally, mayor's here, you know. Joseph has been, Mr. Joseph has been married for 55 years. Congratulations to both of you. With three loving children, and after all this time of taking care of this family, cutting hair for numerous other families, and watching those around him grow up, he has decided to finally give back to himself through retirement. So on behalf of village of Glendale Heights, I present you this certificate of appreciation, and we thank you for your 47 years of business services to the Glendale Heights community. Congratulations on your retirement.
Well, I want to thank Glendale Heights for being so good to me. You know, in 47 years, I never had one bad day. From the first day I opened up the shop, people walked to me with open arms. And I've had customers between Mike Cameron and Ben Fisher and all those three mayors that I've known that were friends. They used to come in and talk to me. So I want to thank Glendale Heights for welcoming me and to being so kind to me. Thank you.
Congratulations. Number three, we also have three promotions tonight in the police department. We have the promotion of Police Commander Michael Pentecost to Deputy Chief, Sergeant Brad Malloy to Commander, and Officer Michael Noe to Sergeant. Congratulations.
All right, thank you, Mayor and village board.
And before that, I want to add a little thing, you know. These promotions are not based on nepotism or cronyism. They are independent persons. I appreciate that, you know.
Thank you, Mayor. Due to the upcoming retirement of Deputy Chief Bailey, wherever he's at in the back, we are going to have some promotions. And the promotions, like the mayor said, we're going to have one of our officers promoted to the rank of sergeant. We're going to have a sergeant promoted to the rank of police commander, and our commander is going to be promoted to the rank of deputy chief. This is going to ensure a successful succession plan for our police department's future. We're going to be recognizing Dave Bailey's retirement at the February 2nd board meeting, so we got a little bit of time for that. First, I want to acknowledge our police family, which is here today to support our officers for this promotion. That includes both active and retired police officers. We have a great family here, and that's something we are proud of, and that's why we are the best police department in the state of Illinois. I also want to recognize our police commissioners. We have Esther Wilk and Vic Macias. Kevin Tierney unfortunately has to work tonight, so he will not be here. They put in countless hours, like the mayor said. This is a testing process for these positions. They go through rigorous tests, and our police commissioners are the ones that handle that situation. Today, we're going to start with the promotion for the rank of Deputy Chief of Patrol. This position oversees every aspect of the patrol unit. So Mike Pentecost, can you come forward, please? A little bit about Commander Pentecost, soon to be Deputy Chief Pentecost. He started with the police department in 2000. Mike has held some distinguished positions throughout his career. He had two assignments as a general detective. Commander Pentecost was an investigator for the DuPage County Major Crime Task Force. He's the department expert on use of force, and he does a ton of training for our officers to get them ready, not only for the upcoming changes in laws, but for every aspect of law enforcement. Last year, Mike was promoted to the rank of commander. Mike is here today with his wife Katie, who also works at the police department, his two lovely daughters Samantha and Maddie, his mother and father-in-law Janet and Ralph. I'm going to tell you, Mike loves this police department. He loves the village of Glendale Heights. He works, you guys are not going to believe this, the guy works like 16 hours a day, and his kids never see him at home, so. But he is committed to this village, which is awesome. So with that said, village clerk Marie?
We give him the script or not? There was some debate about that today.
I got one with hand raised, too, right?
It's the one on the outside.
That's why my wife's up here, make sure I do it right.
We can always comment, Katie. Would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Michael J. Pentecost.
I, Michael J. Pentecost.
Having been appointed to the Office of Deputy Chief of Police.
Having been appointed to the Office of Deputy Chief of Police.
In the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois.
In the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois.
In the county of DuPage, aforesaid.
In the county of DuPage, aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Deputy Chief of Police to the best of my ability.
Of the Office of Deputy Chief of Police to the best of my ability.
Correct.
And as customary, Katie, whose wife will be putting on his badge and his collar studs. Ladies and gentlemen, Deputy Chief Michael Pentecost.
Ma'am, Mrs. Michael, if you want to say something, you can come to the podium. Yes.
I'm not so great at this, so I'm going to make it short.
But great, you know.
Um, we, we've worked for this village for a long time. It is our second home. I love it. I love coming here. I've met more family and friends that are here tonight. I just can't say enough good things about it. Very proud of him. He works his, he works hard. So, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, board.
Congratulations.
Thank you, yes. Thank you.
The second portion of our ceremony will be the promotion to the rank of commander. This position oversees the patrol division sergeants, and also our proactive problem-solving initiative in conjunction with community policing. Brad Malloy, can you please come forward? Little background about Brad. Sergeant Malloy started with the police department in 2002. Brad has been, is, was a detective. He was also a certified homicide investigator, an Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force member. And in 2018, he was promoted to the rank of patrol sergeant, where he became a firearms range master. And last year, he was put in charge of the investigations division. Brad is a well-rounded sergeant who will bring his guidance and leadership and experience to the rank of police commander. This is an excellent step forward for our police department and a great step forward for the village of Glendale Heights. Brad is here today with his wife, Kathy. Unfortunately, his little girl Faith is not feeling well, so she's not here, but his son Theodore is here. He also has his father and Father Howard, his mother Terry, his mother-in-law is with Home of Faith, but his father-in-law Frederick is here. So...
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Bradley H. Malloy.
I, Bradley H. Malloy.
Having been appointed to the Office of Commander.
Having been appointed to the Office of Commander.
In the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois.
In the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois.
In the county of DuPage, aforesaid.
In the county of DuPage, aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Commander to the best of my ability.
Of the Office of Commander to the best of my ability.
She did that on purpose. Ladies and gentlemen, Commander Bradley Malloy. And to conclude our ceremony, we will be promoting.
Mr. Pepper's, his wife, Ms. Kathy, please, if you want to say something.
No.
You, you just can come over here and smile, give a smiley.
Okay, to conclude our ceremony, we're going to be promoting an officer to the rank of sergeant. I am proud to announce the promotion of Michael Noe to this position. So Mike and Mallory, if you guys could please come forward. Mike is here with his wife Mallory, his three little sons, Michael, Lucas, and Ethan, his mother Carmella, his mother-in-law and father-in-law Lori and Jim. A little bit about Mike. Mike started with the police department in 2014. He was assigned to the investigations unit in 2017. He's a certified homicide investigator and an Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force member. As an officer, Michael received one Division Meritorious Award and numerous honor mentions. Mike is a well-rounded officer who brings a ton of knowledge and experience to the rank of sergeants. Something that you guys, I don't know if you guys noticed or not, all three of these subjects are officers and commanders and sergeants and deputy chiefs that we promoted, they're big into family and they're big into community-oriented policing, which is awesome for the village of Glendale Heights. Michael is going to be badge number 251. So with that said, you ready?
He knows the routine. Please repeat after me. I, Michael A. Noe.
I, Michael A. Noe.
Having been appointed to the Office of Probationary Sergeant of Police.
Having been appointed to the Office of Probationary Sergeant of Police.
In the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois.
In the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois.
In the county of DuPage, aforesaid.
In the county of DuPage, aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Probationary Sergeant of Police.
Of the Office of Probationary Sergeant of Police.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Ladies and gentlemen, Sergeant Michael Malloy.
Hey Chief, the new pa, patches will look great on this sergeant.
Yes, Sal, thanks for noticing that. Those are gonna come out this year, so it's one of the first uniforms to have them. Thank you, Chester. Mayor and Village Board, can we have a short recess to sign the oaths and?
We will take a quick recess to allow the families to take pictures and have cake out in the hallway. We now go to, go on to public comments of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board?
On an agenda item? There's no old business today. Correct, that, that doesn't count for today. Yeah. At the COW.
There's none, uh, now consent agenda. You have the consent agenda before you. Word acting village administrator, Doug Flynn, please read the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
One, approval of the regular board meeting minutes of December 8th, 2022. Two, approval of the committee, the whole meeting minutes of December 8th, 2022. Three, approval of the accounts payable listing of January 5th, 2023 in the amount of $1,914,429.95. Four, resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award purchase order for the purchase of replacement cassettes in the super disc filters at the wastewater treatment plant. Five, resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and the execution of a contract to furnish, deliver, and install pool filter media replacement at the village of Glendale Heights Sports Hub and Aquatic Center. Six, resolution to adopt municipal legislative positions and priorities for the 2023 legislative session. Seven, resolution authorizing the execution of change order number three, final, for the wastewater treatment plant non-podable water replacement project in the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Eight, resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and the execution of a contract for the purchase and installation of a new HVAC system for the Public Works Building HVAC control panels upgrade project. Nine, motion to approve pay request number three, final, to Joseph J. Henderson and Son Incorporated for the wastewater treatment plant non-podable water replacement project in a total amount not to exceed $31,078. Ten, motion to approve pay request number 14 for the digestion rehabilitation project, total amount not to exceed $188,179.11. Eleven is approval of the consent items.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Trustee Siddiqui and second is trustee Schroder. Uh, discussion? None, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. Old business, there is none. New business. One, emotion to waive first reading on new discuss, uh, business item two. Is there a motion to waive first reading on new business item two? Uh, trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Trustee Schroder?
Second.
Second. Uh, discussion? None, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
The motion to waive first reading on new business item two is approved. Number two, an ordinance to repeat, uh, ordinance 2022-86 to waive bid to accept the revised proposal of Stewart, Spreading Incorporation for Sludge, Halling, and Disposal Services, and to authorize the execution of a revised contract by and between Stewart, Spreading, Incorporation, and the village of Glendale Heights. LNI requests to waive first reading ordinance 2023-02. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2023-02? Uh, trustee Siddiqui?
So moved.
Second, trustee Schroder. Discussion? None?
No, no, I got my hands up. Uh, how much is that revised proposal? Is that a big increase or what's involved in that?
The problem with the proposal, Chester, it didn't have a performance bond, uh, attached to the price and the fuel surcharge. So we had a performance bond and a Sinagro contract and a fuel surcharge, so we just added it to this contract. We compared them and it's still cheaper by a hundred dollars per load.
Oh, it is, okay. That's good. Thank you.
Anybody else? None, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2023-02 is approved. We now go on public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda item only? None. Uh, next is executive session. Number one, purchase of real estate property pursuant to Open Meeting Act 5. LNI compiles achieve, uh, 120, oblig two, C, five. Is there a motion to suspend the village board meeting and to go to committee of the whole?
I wanna add, uh, a motion to add one more in the executive session. And I want the executive session to be continued after the committee on the whole because I'm seeing people sitting here and, you know, they don't wanna wait while we are. So I wanna add the, can I have a motion to add the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee of the public body pursuant to Open Meetings Acts, S I L C S 120 dash two, C, one.
Can we get a motion to add that to the executive session?
Executive session.
Is there a second? Well, we're going for one, one issue. He, the trustee Siddiqui is asking to add another item to the executive session, which we can do, um, but it needs to be voted on before we can do it.
Is there any requirement, notice requirement, like forty-eight or something?
No, not for that. We could do that at the meeting. Yeah.
You can add. Are we, um, going to cow before?
Yes, that's also I, I'm requesting.
But we'll need, we'll need that whole motion before we adjourn to executive session.
Yes.
So there's a motion from the mayor to suspend the board meeting, to recess the meeting and go to COW.
Right.
Trustee Siddiqui just made a second motion for an addition to the exact session.
This is an amendment.
Right.
It's an amendment, but that'll have to be re-stated.
Until we come back to the board, we'll do COW. Then we'll come back to the board definition. So at this time, there's a motion on the floor to suspend the meeting and go into the COW.
We need, we need someone to.
Okay, so I need a motion to adjourn?
Well, no, a motion to suspend the meeting will go into the COW and then we'll come back, um, here and then, uh, go to executive session.
What would these people?
That's what we're gonna do, COW.
That's what I'm requesting.
So is there a motion to go, uh, to suspend the meeting and proceed with the COW?
Recession.
So moved.
Yeah.
Uh, I need motion to suspend this, uh, uh, meeting and to go to executive session?
No.
Committee of the whole.
Committee on the whole.
Committee of the whole, yes.
Committee of the whole, right. Motion?
Someone make a motion?
Trustee Siddiqui and trustee Schmidt.
Is that a question or is it a motion?
No, it's a motion.
Okay.
Yeah, I say moved, so moved, yes. And second. Second, yeah, done.
So discussion?
I need a ro, roll call.
Roll call vote?
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
So, this meeting is suspended.
And we're gonna go into the COW.
Okay, I'll say a question.
Yes.
You put in this, you put it on the executive session, right? We don't have to vote on that, do we?
We didn't add the second one. It has to be vo, it has to be voted on, but when we come back to the board. So my understanding is trustee Schmidt is going to be chairing the COW today.
I would like to call this committee, the whole meeting of Thursday, January 5th, 2023, to order. Will the clerk please note who is present?
Noted.
Thank you. Does anyone have any additions or deletions? Uh, Mr. Siddiqui?
I have two. Uh, one is exit interview and number two is Farmer's Market.
Would you say number one again?
Uh, exit interviews.
Exit interviews.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, uh, is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board?
Christopher Epstein Club Drive, Glendale Heights, Illinois. I want to bring up about what was occurring at special board meeting with regards to shipping the baseball and football programs back to the, uh, public as opposed to being ha, uh, handled internally. Approximately twelve ago, uh, years ago, five of you broke us up. I was part of the Glens, Glenside Baseball and Softball Association for no good reason, only for your self-interest. At that particular time, you added an employee, I guess, to oversee the baseball, softball, and football programs. Why are you now kicking it, uh, back to, uh, the general public, the people that ran it perfectly? Last time or as good as possible. It didn't cost the village anything, but for the last twelve years approximately, it's cost the village probably at least a hundred thousand dollars salary. There, I believe there was a person hired for it. Maybe we can lose one headcount over there for this and see if they're not gonna be doing it any longer. But just a reminder that five of the six of you had voted to take it from, uh, organizations that were running it. At least I know the baseball and softball was running, even though it was accusations of mishandling of funds, which never were proven or anything like that. No FOIA was ever requested of me, it being the treasurer at that time. So, I'm just letting the public know, you know, that if it would have kept on going, we probably still would have it and have the, uh, people that wanted the program and continue to run the program going forward. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Epstein, I'd love to answer that one for you.
No, I, I don't even answer.
I know you don't want, prefer to get an answer, but I do know that the, you never turned in.
If you can direct your comments to, to the board.
Okay.
And please identify yourself.
I'm Rebecca Tiber, 2132 Glen Ellen Road, Glendale Heights. The baseball establishment never turned in their financials, um, all the time, and the whatever, when, whenever they did get it turned in, they never made money on concessions. There was no concession funding turned in. And we know that there's a lot of concessions that are sold during baseball games. And we know that there is money that was made during concessions, but there was always zero. There was no concession money was ever turned in. Bec, so because of, um, they were an associate of Glendale Heights, and that's the only thing that they asked the, the families or the, the people that were running these organizations is to turn in the financials. And if some refused, and when they did get them turned in, there was no money with concessions. It's like, well, really? So, that's why they took it over. Uh, it was not against anybody. They just felt that it, there was mismanagement of money. Okay, so that was for that one. Now, I, I'm on a totally different route here because, um, I just, why am I here? Oh, yeah, um, I just wanted to know when you got a raise before you got it voted in, because I heard that you're driving a car. Or the car is issued, or the village has issued you a car, Mayor? Is this true?
No.
No? Okay, I was just told that, so that's not true. It's good to know.
There's administrative cars that are available for anybody administration to drive. When the mayor goes to meetings, the mayor takes one of those cars to go to a meeting.
Okay, all right.
But it's parked here every night.
Cause that, Mayor's never had a car. The village administrators have had cars, yes, well as Public Works, but never the mayor, so.
No, it's not assigned to him. It's, it's a pool car.
Right, oh, okay. Thank you. So then, as I'm listening to our police officers and, and the love of family and the love of their job and the sixteen hours that they put in, and I know this because of the hours that I put in, of the countless hours, and hearing that, um, and I have nothing against your secretary. I heard she's a great person and does very well. But to work four days a week and get paid for a full week, and knowing that I put in sixty hours a week for years, I mean, I got in trouble because I wasn't in at eight o'clock AM and I would work till two or three o'clock in the morning and I got yelled at by our village administrator because not only were, was the mayor my boss, but the trustees are my boss, the village administrator, assistant village administrator was, I had ten bosses. And if I wanted to take off, or if I went to a doctor's appointment, which by the way, Linda sees Dr. De Ramos, I see Dr. O'Neil, same building, I would make an appointment with her when we would go every three months for our medicine. So yes, I brought the mayor up with me to our doctor's appointments, cause it was the same building. But, you know, I worked, I never worked forty hours a week. It, it's sixty at least weekends. And, and I did it because I loved the village, as the Police Department does. They're very involved in the village. They love to work in the village. They, you know, time is now, is not, uh, anything when it comes to the village. But to have somebody that is being paid full-time on a salary and only working four days a week, I think you're ripping off the, the village. And that's my personal opinion.
Uh, Ms. Rebecca, can, uh, chairman, can I, uh, answer, you know? Uh, Ms. Schmidt? Can I answer?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Rebecca, I really appreciate you work lot, many hours. For that, I really appreciate and thank you for working that.
Thank you.
She doesn't.
Every Friday?
That, this is not a conversation for a board meeting.
Right, right, this is not a conversation.
My name is Mickey Janeski, I live at 1891 Hickory Lane. At the last meeting, the mayor said that he is doing the best that he can. That's what he responded to Mike Onaviris. And then you told Ed Pope you want to be respected. So now I'm wondering, when are you going to do your job and appoint the department heads and quit dangling their employment? No answers? Doesn't surprise me.
Thank you for coming.
I don't think there's any way else, but we can proceed.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we'll move on to committee recommendations. There are none, so we want to start with discussion regarding the formulation of a committee to initiate and evaluate a RFP for cricket. Uh, trustee Maritato?
No, I, I would, I would like to ask the board if we can table this for more information.
Are you making a motion to table?
I'm making a motion to table it.
All right, so there's a motion to table on the floor, is there a second to that motion to table? Second. There's no discussion, it'd be.
Is there a discussion?
There's no discussion on the motion to table. It'd be a vote, roll call vote.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Mayor Coker?
Yes.
Okay, the motion has passed. Next is exit interview, trustee Siddiqui.
Yeah, actually, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, I want to go first with the farmer's market. So my question to you, Keith, is do we have anything in the village about farmer's market? Because I know summer is coming. A lot of people, we do gardening by hobby, and I think it would be a good idea if we, we can try having some kind of a farmer's market, because people who grow produce at their home, they can bring it over there or they can donate it. And maybe, you know, it's, it's just, we can donate these produce and the money which we generate, we can donate it to the, to the charities, including myself. Like in the summer, I have sometimes a lot of produce, which I really don't know, I'm, I'm distributing it to my friends. But it would be a better place if we can have it somewhere on the village parking or some, you know, on the weekends. Maybe we can try that, and I know you are working on something for gardening. So maybe, you know, that can also, people can grow over there and bring it to the. So this just comes into my mind and I just thought to you.
Sure, we can certainly look into that as a possible program or something that we can look at for the, for the future. Next year, we'll see what we can come up with. If we get something, I'll bring it to the parks committee and then we can kind of move it forward and bring it back to you at a later time.
Yeah, that would be great, thank you. Uh, my second is exit interview. So I need to know why we have exit interview and what we do with those. Like, what is the reason we are having the exit interviews?
Well, the purpose of the exit interview is to hear from the employee, reasoning why they're leaving. Sometimes employees leave just because they're retiring, sometimes employees leave for other reasons.
Okay, so.
The purpose is to, if they're leaving for other reasons, try and figure out what those reasons are and make corrections.
Okay, and how we make corrections to those? Like, do we, like, form a committee or do we go through those exit interview? Because being a.
So they're reviewed by HR and administration. And sometimes there's a policy that needs to be adjusted. Sometimes the person leaving resolves the issue.
Okay.
But generally, 90% of them, 95% of them are retirements and they're retiring because they want to retire.
Mm-hmm.
And.
Do we generate any reports? I mean, how we look on those exit interviews, like, by yearly or semi-yearly? We, we generate a report, let's say, three or four employees left the city or retired. And based on those exit interview, do we make any recommendations? Do we point out that what is the trend and why they are leaving? What is the, the cause of the leaving?
We have inform, you know, yes, we, we track information related to reasons why people are leaving. If there's, you know, deficiencies and we've, we try and figure that out. I really don't want to discuss that here.
No, I, I totally agree with you and, and, because I've been monitoring those exit interviews and I'm seeing a, a pattern. And that's the reason why I'm bringing it over here. And I don't want to discuss that. I respect the privacy and I don't want to discuss those matters publicly, but I just need to know what's the village is doing to, to correct that. And, and maybe we should do a maybe semi-annually kind of a report, which, if you can share us with the board, like, you know, after every six months, whatever, whoever left and we go through. And if we see a kind of a pattern, a kind of a same points, which they are mentioning again and again. And if you can share that information with the board, that would be great.
Mr. Schmidt, can I answer for that?
Yes, you may.
You know, the purpose of exit interview, interview is very excellent, is very helpful, you know. But if that purpose is hijacked, you know, it's politicized, you know, then it's the worst, you know. People who come up to age and they retire and then they say, oh, I didn't have, you know, I, I got retirement, but that guy was bad, that guy was bad. If the people, any employee has some problem, he or she should come right away, you know. That's, that's my answer.
So we can provide the board a report of kind of the themes?
Mm-hmm.
If you will, of reasons people have left. And we can generate a report for that.
Yeah, the, the whole reason.
I don't want to get, you know, into specifics or names and that kind of stuff.
Oh, no, no, I don't want that.
There's generalities.
Yeah, you know, the, the whole reason is, uh, I've been, what, you know, we, we need to learn and how to, to correct the things for the village. That's the whole purpose of this. I think maybe the, the purpose of exit interview is want to know why this employee is leaving. And if he is unhappy, okay, maybe employee A is unhappy, employee B is unhappy. But if we are seeing a pattern, then there is something going on, then you would say, yes, you know, that, we have some problem. The whole reason, what I really want is, uh, from these reports is to point point and correct that. So our village employee have a work environment and ex, I mean, which, where they can manage their family and they, they want to come to the village for work happily. They, they don't want to say, oh, no, I don't have to, okay, I have to go to the work, kind of thing. That's the whole purpose of me bringing this, in this. It's not pointing out or, or hijacking or, or whatever the words are. It's not that purpose. The purpose, so it is, so we can do something or, or correct. If there is some kind of a, maybe board needs the direction or maybe board needs to adopt some new policy.
Well, I will, I will tell you the, the, the primary theme of employees who have left recently has been, they've taken other positions with higher authority. They've left, uh, some of our public works departments to become supervisors in other places.
Okay.
And one of the general themes, you know, it's, it, most of our jobs are laborist type jobs with hierarchies and people generally stay in those positions for extended periods of time. And you can only have, you know, one supervisor per seven people or six people or eight people, because somebody's got to do the work.
Mm-hmm.
And when supervisors stay in place for 15, 20 years, you know, there's no other way for people to move up other than to move out.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So it's kind of the, the general theme of where our employees have moved on to. I can think of three, four off the top of my head that have left to get supervisory positions or gone from groundskeeper to maintenance worker in other position, in other communities. And we recognize that, right, as a theme. And we brainstorm on how to, to, you know, we made a crew leader position. We're working on, uh, this past Christmas, because of that, we allowed, uh, line level employees, when foreman were on vacation, to be acting foremen, to help them get supervisory experience, to help them learn what it's like to lead, to be in charge of a division and apartment for a week or two at a time. Jeff McCumber right now is acting, uh, public works director while, while Ms. Kaplan is out recovering from something. So these are things that we're doing to try and promote people to, to better positions and get them prepared when their time is ready to be a supervisor, be a crew leader. Those are the general themes that, that we're getting. And we'll, we'll brainstorm and get together and go and review the last year or two of, of exit interviews and put together a report for the board.
That would be great, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you, trustee Maritato.
No, we, we've been doing that, well, we've been doing that for a while with the crew leaders.
Yes.
In public works and in parks. Right, Keith? I mean, we've been doing that for a couple of years now.
We don't have any crew leaders at this time, but yes, we've started to do the, putting the foreman in place.
And, you know, it's a, it's, it's a, it's not lost on us how slow people are to move into supervisory positions, because nobody leaves, right? It's also a testament to the fact that they're able to gain supervisory positions or better positions in other municipalities to the work that they get here and the training they get here and the knowledge they get here, because if they didn't have that, then they wouldn't be able to go somewhere else and achieve a higher position. So we'll get that together.
Okay, thank you.
Chester?
Doug, I, I just want to make one little comment. I know of two, possibly three employees that left this comp, this village due to working conditions. I think you'll have to agree with me. And I'm sure the board will agree with me, they know who I'm talking about. And that's all I'm going to say at, at this point.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Yes. I want to add, you know, any employee in the village of Glendale Heights, if he or she feels there is some problem, we have very apparent and very professional complaint procedure. He or she can proceed on that. And followed that procedure, we have excellent guy working as assistant village administrator, Mr. Flint. He has tons of experience and he's working. And if somebody has complained, he or she should come up and explain. And people who get their retirement and they find other job, then they say they had problem. That is not, to me, that's not acceptable, you know. There's something wrong somewhere, you know. And I gave you one example, one of my director left, you know. And before that director left, uh, we had discussion on phone at least for 30, 35 minutes. If she's listening, she can come and talk with me, talk with Mr. Flint, you know. And I asked her, is there, there was any problem from anywhere, any, any view, from any angle? She said, no, I'm fine, I'm going with my own will and I'm looking something else, you know. She got, she said that, I mean, I say director, director said, you know, that she, uh, director has a retirement age and wanted to do some different stuff, you know. So this is, when someone has problem, please come up and talk, you know. Talk with Mr. Flint, talk with mayor. I'm very open and I am very apparent in every aspect, you know. I do not hire my relatives, I do not hire friends, uh, children of my friends, you know. If somebody has something to say, come with proof and talk with me. Still, anybody who is not working and has come with me, come to my office, come to Mr. Flint, you know, with proof, not just with smile on lips, you know. That makes, you know, something fishy. Thank you very much.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
And reconvene, and reconvene to the.
To the.
The board.
Okay.
Yeah.
Adjourn and reconvene to the board meeting, is that correct?
Yeah, that's fine, that'll work.
Okay, okay. Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes, second.
Okay, trustee Pojek?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Mayor Coker?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.
No, you have to reconvene.
Uh, I call, uh, village board meeting resume and.
Back to order.
Back to order.
Executive session.
Okay, executive session.
But there was a motion or, I believe there's going to be a motion to add item number two.
Yes.
We'll need one on item number one also.
Well, I want to add it first, if it gets added, and then we'll take a vote on going into executive session on those items.
Okay, what's that?
Restate.
Yeah, I would state.
Number two.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want me to repeat?
Well, yeah, if, if you, you have a motion to add another item to executive session.
Exactly. The Appointment Employment Compensation Discipline Performance or Dismissal of a Specific Employee of the Public Body pursuant to Open Meetings Act ILCS 120 slash 2C1.
So you've made that motion to add it as item number two to executive.
Yeah, can someone second that?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Mayor Coker?
Yes.
All right, so mayor, at this time, um, we have executive session for two purposes. I would read the first one and then the second, this is the second. You have to read item number one.
This one?
Yes.
So we have two purposes for the executive session. Number one, purchase of real, real property pursuant to Open Meeting Act 5ILCS 120, obligate 2C5. And second one is the Appointment Employment Compensation Discipline Performance or Dismissal of specific employees of the public.
Public body?
Public, public body 71, percent to.
Open Meetings Act.
Open Meeting Act.
Five.
Five ILCS 120, obligate 2C1.
So is there a motion to go into executive session for those two items?
Yes.
Motion?
Motion to go to those.
Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
At the C.
Second.
Second. Uh, dismiss?
No, we have to take a roll call vote.
Roll call vote.
Guys, I can only write so fast.
Yeah, it's confusing.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Mayor Coker?
Yes.
Well, Marie, why, why you haven't, why you calling the mayor?
Because it's committee.
No, we're at the board meeting.
Oh, we're at the board meeting, I'm sorry. I will take that off.
I was getting confused, yeah, we're at the.
Thank you, sorry.
Yeah, so we're going to adjourn to executive session.
Yeah.
Yeah, and.
Yeah.
Uh, we are going to adjourn for executive session.
Hold on. Yes.
I know what time it is now.
No, because we can't, we can't take action, yeah.
Well, I'm writing all over because I ran out.